All right, roll call please.
Hey, Brenneman.
Here.
Keel.
Here.
O'Hara.
Here.
Wosler.
Here.
Mattson.
Yes.
And Jones and Jass are absent at all this.
Any additions to the agenda? Most of you approve the agenda?
No.
All in favor, remain.
Aye.
Approve the minutes for our previous meeting. That's from our 9/6/2022 meeting.
Approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approve. Approved bills submitted for payment? See any dis? Now, at this time, we have public comments.
You gotta approve those. You gotta approve those.
I'm sorry.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approve. Approved bills submitted for payment? See any dis? Now, at this time, we have public comments. But if those comments-
You gotta approve those. You gotta approve those.
I'm sorry.
Second.
O'Hara.
Yes.
Brenneman.
Yes.
Mattson.
Yes.
Wosler.
Yes.
Uh, yes. Thank you. Now, public comments. Just one of those comments in five minutes, please. There'll be public comments. You state your name for the record.
My name is Tom Holmes. And I live in Sioux Falls. Thank you for allowing me this time. I'm a candidate for the Minnehaw County Commission. And I decided I wanted to meet with you folks to let you know that I'm elected. As a county commissioner, I will deign to be attentive to the needs of the county, including the folks here. I know you may have some needs. Just first of all, a little bit about myself. I moved to Sioux Falls after I graduated from college. Taught in public schools there for a long time. Retired several years ago. Served two terms in the state legislature. I've been out now for a little while. Was encouraged towards the county commission. And like a lot of other folks, I wasn't sure that the county commission actually did. So I checked it out, and I realized that it does a lot for us that we probably don't even think about. So I decided to run. And since I made that decision, I've been going virtually every county commission meeting. And I've sat down with the heads of all the departments and interviewed them and talked to them about their jobs. Most of those folks have names we wouldn't recognize. Might pass them on the street, not even know they work for us. But I can tell you that they are a good group of people, quality people, dedicated professionals. They and their staffs really work hard to try to do what they can to provide a good quality life for us here in Minnehaw County. Now, the reason I'm running is because I've always had an interest in public service. I got that from those days for my mother early on. And I've always been engaged in volunteer work. One of the places I volunteers at doing hospice, if you're familiar with that. I go there on Thursday evenings. And it's not uncommon for me to see people at hospice lying there with some terrible disease waiting to die, or younger than I am. And it makes you think. Like, why do I still have my health? Why do I have my strength? I could just take those for granted and indulge myself in whatever I want. Or I could use them to give back, to help people. And that's why I decided to run for the county commission, because it's a way for me to get that. Now, I know you folks have some issues here. Primary among them perhaps is that CO2 pipeline issue. I've been trying to learn as much as I can about that. And there's still a lot to be learned, I know. And the decision, the final decision, probably isn't going to come yet for a while. But what I can tell you is my position, and I've spoken with some folks from this area who've come into county commission meetings, and they've pulled me aside and talked to me. What I can tell you is that I respect the rights of the property owner. A lot of folks have had that lived in their families for generations. They've taxes on it to take care of it. And when push comes to shove, you have to respect the rights of the property owner. And that would be my position if I won the commission. Another issue that we have to deal with is the issue of methamphetamine use. My interviews with the sheriff and with the state's attorney, they both say that most of the crime in this county is driven by the methamphetamine. And if you've been paying attention to the news, you know that the sheriff was on TV last night talking about how dangerous it is, increasingly so, for him to send his officers to put that uniform on. And I just think that's gotta be driven by meth. I can't do anything to stop people from taking meth. It's obviously a very addictive, very dangerous drug. But I know the county has taken some big strides, made some big strides, in trying to do the best they can to deal with that issue. And one of those is to help people who become addicted. Help them to get off that drug and hopefully get back into a life that they can find productive and that they can be taxpaying citizens and make something of themselves. And that sort of program, I would want to encourage. And I would strive on the commission to look for ways to improve whatever we do to help those people get back on their feet and become a down-to-earth person society. So once again, my name is Tom Holmes. Candidate for the Minnehaw County Commission. I appreciate the time you've given me. And I think I've left a card with each of you. Got my website on there. And I've also got my email if you wanna contact me. So thank you once again. Thank you. Thank you.
Any other public comments? All right, so moving on to the special event application. The downtown Hartford area witches of Warlock's Wine Walk. Uh, that information is in our packet. Uh, this is... How many years consecutively is this?
Four now.
Fourth?
Four.
Fourth one? Yeah.
I think all in all, it's pretty much the same plan as in previous years. Um, I... It did indicate that if they get an interest, they would maybe have homebrewers at this one, that they would stage along Main Street. Homebrewers can't sell alcohol, so there'd be no selling of alcohol, but it'd be samples that they would give out within the closure area.
Sure, I understand, sure. As long as they're within the confines of this event.
They can give it, and people can drink it, as long as they're not selling it.
Sure, sure.
I make a motion to approve the special event application for the witches of Warlock.
Second. All right, this spend's proposed for October 15th from 4:00 to 10:00. Main Avenue closed between Second and Fifth, and then First Street closed from May to the hour. Any discussion? Chris?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
And I'm yes.
Now, we have our 7/5 public hearing resolution 2022-11, Vacation of a Portion of North Rodden Lane. We're gonna vacate a portion of that that was originally designated as a street.
Yeah, so this is a little section of right-of-way that, um, it's a rude lane and it's right north of Opal Lane. The original preliminary plans were to connect this between Opal Lane and Mickelson Road. There's nothing there right now. It's just bare ground. And that was so there would be a couple of accesses to the Western Meadows development. Well, since the time of the original preliminary plans were, we added Diamond Trail. So it gave them, basically, Opal Lane and Diamond Trail then to access Western Meadows. So they have their two ingress and egress access to their development. And this roadway would not be needed to serve. So, um, a couple of years ago, the developer actually came to the city council. Those that were here at that time probably remember they had some things they wanted to change in their preliminary plan, and this was one of them. And the council agreed that this isn't a necessary right-of-way. So, um, they have since then now finally got around to, we drafted a petition for them to submit, and now they've submitted a petition to vacate this right-of-way. So that's what they're asking. It went to the planning and zoning board last week. They approved it and recommend approval to the city council, and now it's before you.
And if you remember, we redid, um, that intersection there, we did actually run a curve right on through there and changed the storm sewers and hydrant to face them too.
Yeah, we, you know, that intersection, Opal Road, had that storm sewer that was heated, correct?
Heated, yeah, yeah. So we redid that intersection and put a solid curve to the series, because we see this coming.
Do we have any concerns about future traffic patterns, especially with the Western Avenue being reshaped? If there's a, if ever becomes a divided, that would put a, that would cramp on that development's access?
This whole development right now is pretty much all that can be added off of the intersections, because after that, they get to that drainage ditch. So that, that and the rest of their property that they have will be going to Mickelson.
Sure. We're gonna add it on approximately how many lots though between now and then? There's how many left to be built out?
There's quite, quite a few left.
I support the idea of this concern about the implications for future, for future egress and access to that development. I know there's a curve currently going through there that was part of the plan, but that's, that's just, um, just finally a concern about vacating that.
I accept that the developer, current developer, has indicated, like they did, you know, two years ago, that they don't have plans to connect it.
Right, right. So there's nothing in the plans for Western Avenue improvement that would limit the access to this, to those Diamond Trail and Rodden Lane at this time?
I would say, um, big things that we're looking at right now with that traffic study, really that Opal Lane area. If we look at Diamond Trail, that intersection right there, it's almost too close to be interstate to really put, you know, a signal or change traffic at all in there, because it's really a throw-up pattern. But as everything grows in the future, there are options at that Opal Lane. Once those traffic problems get that high, we'll analyze that, you know, seeing that traffic that we're gonna study. You know, kind of some of those triggers that will have to happen, and then we can analyze that intersection. And, you know, maybe at that time, it becomes signalized or four ways down. Or some other measures to help, you know, some of those people out there, they don't feel stumped. Especially if they're, you know, trying to go northbound and crossing traffic, that's where you're gonna get those biggest delays. So as part of that traffic study, we'll be looking at, you know, really that Opal Lane and then to the north Mickelson as well. But that Opal Lane is really what's gonna affect, affect these people. So there are solutions in the future, you know, to make sure they don't get, you know, so-called stranded in the dirt.
Yeah, the timing of that study and this, um, was really the reason I was asking that question. Someone else said, we haven't received that report yet. And so I wanna make sure we kinda flush that out a little. Public comments on that? We'll be looking for a motion to approve resolution 2022-11.
And as noted in my staff report, if we do vacate it, we do wanna keep the easements in place for the drainage, I suppose. And that was P and Z's recommendation. And then that's stated in the resolution, so if we approve the resolution, that will be in place.
So absolutely worst-case scenario, could become a street in the future? Does the easement say?
No.
No.
Only if the developer decides to change, turn it back into a road.
Or the city would have-
Easements would just be on the private property, so.
On the private property, those easements.
Right, it would be right-of-way.
Not right-of-way. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Sorry, I was just looking at the map. I was just... By vacating that road, it could also bring Opal Lane north of another possibility, maybe.
I don't believe there'd be, it's all private property around that portion, so there'd probably be no chance in the future for the road to go in that area.
I think, um, just trying to understand if we already, if the council voted, this is just the formal... So we voted on one?
Yeah, because the formal procedure is they needed to submit a petition, and then we need to draft a resolution and act on that, yeah. Basically, when they came back in 2020, like I said, they had a few items, and those minutes were in your packet of things that they asked the council to consider, and the council at that time wasn't very able.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 2022-11.
I'll second it.
Motion of the second. O'Hara?
Yes.
Brenneman?
Yeah.
Mattson?
Yes.
Chris?
Has.
And I'm yes. All right, our 7/10 public hearing to amend zoning regulations and to adapt, uh, sorry, commercial building standards. Planning Zoning's been working on this for a while.
Yep, Planning Zoning has kinda all gone through about three meetings with them. And this would be a change in our zoning regulations that would adopt commercial building standards. And so there's standards for, if you're gonna put up a commercial building, you know, how much brick or macing needs to be on it, you know, um, which way the doors can face, um, you know, where you would put your HVAC, and, you know, there's a few lists of items there. And this was brought to the Planning Zoning Board by Mary Economic and Development Director. Thought it'd be, she wanted some regulations in place, because previously, we don't have any regulations for community commercial buildings at all. So she wants some regulations that would put some stipulations on buildings, so they're aesthetically pleasing. So when people drive through our town, you know, there's some standards in place. You can't just throw up anything you want, which, kind of now you do, as long as it meets the IBC codes. So, um, so the Planning Zoning then started looking at it. We looked at different covenants and different regulations other cities had. And this is what the Planning and Zoning Board came up with and passed at their last meeting and is looking for approval from you tonight. I think the regulations, um, put some nice standards in place, which seem a lot of common sense things for a building, because if I was a building owner, I would like to incorporate them too. But I think they're not so stringent that it would hamper anybody to build within the city. We just, you know, we talked about that too. We didn't wanna be too stringent to ward off any, you know, commercial building.
Thinking back to my P and Z days, the steel roofs were always a hot topic. And I see that this does allow an exposed fastener metal roof. Is that what you consider a barn roof? Barn tent?
You can't have the corrugated roof, but you could have the metal sheet roof, yes. And it's gotta have the standing seam in it.
That's not the way it's worded. Should be a standing seam or an exposed fastener metal roof or equipment.
Right. So like on residential, you, you know, the only thing you can have in residential, you could still have a metal roof, because we've changed our regulations of that for residential. But you have gotta have the channel that doesn't allow the faster. In commercial, you can't.
Okay, okay.
It's a little more lenient, because it is a commercial building.
Yeah, it'd be a bit costly for a 120,000 square foot building.
Oh, sure. That's what we're thinking, yeah.
It's not unnecessarily restricted, is what I'm saying.
Yeah.
I make a motion to approve ordinance 7/5.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Mattson?
Yes.
Brenneman? Yeah? Wosler?
Yes.
O'Hara?
Yes.
And I'm yes. Second reading of ordinance 7/4 or 2023 budget ordinance? There's been no changes since our last reading of this?
No, I said, um, as noted in my report of the spreadsheet with the memo total, I didn't have my formulas in there quite right, so a couple of them were often first reading. So those have been adjusted and they're, they're correct now. The, um, all the figures that were in the amounts and the funds, those are completely the same, yeah. And they reflect what, you know, we discussed that budget.
What'd you do before Excel?
Uh, no, I should have had, yeah, I should have. You take that for granted. You should have had it all.
Motion to approve second reading of ordinance 7/4. I'll second.
Motion of the second? Any discussion? We'll call the vote. Brenneman?
Yeah.
Wosler?
Yes.
O'Hara?
Yes.
Mattson?
Yes.
And I'm yes. Review of resolutions 2022-9 and 2022-10, those are the street maintenance fees for 2023. One of those is existing. Those are, well, no, those are both 2022.
Right, because each year, we do have to adopt a resolution for a street maintenance fee. The 2022-9 reflects the dollar per linear foot with the minimum of the $65 that we currently have in place now. And then at last meeting, we discuss looking at adopting a $1.50 per square foot. So resolution 2022-10 incorporates a $1.50 per linear foot. And then that also raises the, the base minimum to 97, I gotta look here quick. 97.50. Because we just, percentage-wise, just raised that as well. So, um, you can look at the, the difference between the two. Changing it from a dollar to a $1.50 would generate us a little over another $75,000 in additional revenue, which, like I said, we're limited by our revenue streams, and this is one thing we can look at as far as this. As all our expenses increase for street maintenance, this is something we can help kinda defray some of those costs.
So the minimum is 97.50?
It would be a few dollars.
With, yeah, with the dollar per.
But that's not the way exhibit A reads, unless I'm not looking at it correctly.
Sure, the connect, both of them, because the one is 65.
Yeah, let's see, I'm just scrolling down here. This is 2022-9 exhibit A. Our second property listed there has a total of-
2022-9 is the old one, the 65. So 22-10 would be the one with the 97.50. And, yeah, there's a lot of pages, so you gotta scroll a lot. Sorry.
Swiping.
Yeah, a lot of, a lot of.
I fell asleep previous to that.
Yeah, it's... It's a lot, thank you.
2022 exhibit A, then for 2022-9 is existing.
Correct, is what we, and that's what we-
2022-10 is proposed.
Yes. Like I said, we do have to adopt one or the other tonight, whichever one you guys wanna go with. That way then, once we adopt it, we can send it to the county, so we can get, you know, into their system for the next year collections.
I would make a motion to approve resolution 2022-10.
Second. You have a motion of a second? Do you have any discussion?
I just think that stucks, because it stinks, because we just did the water surcharge and everything.
Right.
Everything worked on now, too.
Questions for us?
Yep.
There's a joke in there somewhere.
He didn't laugh, so.
All right, changes to the revenue collected again, you mentioned it, but what's that number? From what I heard, it's sort of-
Yeah, between, it's a moment.
So as we've seen, increases in slay seal expenses and probably gravel, patch sealing, crack sealing.
May bar.
Motion. Second.
Do we need help?
Chris?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Mark? And I'm yes. All right. All right, so the Hartford area fire rescue report is in our packet. Chief was able to make it, seemed to have a little work conflict. So for the crowd, we had 42 total calls in August. Seventeen of those were in the city of Hartford. September training was EMS training on OB ventilation, oxygenation, ambulance safety, EMS hygiene. And fireside and things, did a controlled burn of a house. And then both of them had some narcane drug testing. Where was the controlled burn of the house that carried, you know?
They haven't, I don't believe it's been done yet. It's on Highway 42.
Oh.
On 12th Street going, um, west of the Wallbrook intersection, about a mile and a half, two miles. We've been doing a lot of training in it over the last year.
All right, you burned it down? Call it, call it done?
We got enough, enough tour bar on it, so.
Fair, sure, okay. Uh, another note in here is Public Safety Day was a huge success. They estimated between 300 and 500 attendees. The ALS Services Act, what is that?
So we've got, uh, two people in an apartment that are actually, will be three, that are ALS certified, advanced life support.
Okay.
So they'll be able to run ALS calls, so they'll be able to do IVs and some other stuff that the ALS can do, basic life support can do.
I think it's a big one, because they have to wait for either two falls or Humble Canons to arrive, so I will go. It's a little foggy outside, new ALS.
Cool.
And there could be times through the evenings or weekends that Humble might not have an ALS person on board, so one of our, one of the three would, if they're there, they jump on, run the calls.
Sure.
So it's a good deal.
Yeah, very good. It's almost great. All right, so moving on to the Chamber and Economic Development Director's report, Amy Farr.
Thank you. Um, most of my information is in your packet already. Just a couple of follow-ups. Truck Retrieval will be held on Saturday, October 29th, at the school from 3:00 to 5:00. There is a link on our webpage right now. If you would like to have your business or an individual sponsor a trunk, you're certainly able to do that. There is no cost to that. Second, we will be having our September membership mixer next Tuesday, the 27th, located at 4608, oh, excuse me, 46089, 263rd Street. It is at Cowboy Way Church. Um, and then we are still in the planning for our annual meeting, the annual banquet that will be held. Market Committee continues to do great things with Facebook posts, some updates here and there, um, through email and so forth. Moving on to economic development, I'm excited to say that we had a wonderful groundbreaking yesterday for Black Tie Components. They are the individuals that purchased the 18 acres just south of Central State. So they're hoping to start building as soon as possible. Maple Pass is moving right along with their, um, housing project, so that's nice to see. Dairy Queen, I believe, had a wall up today when I drove by, so that was exciting. Um, another property has trees being removed and the ground being graded. So there's a lot of development right now happening here in Hartford, so that's good. Thank you for allowing me to be to the Black Hills last week for our conference. Heard a lot more. It's easier to take it in this year versus being relatively new last year, trying to absorb it also. Appreciate that. Other than that, business as usual for the HAF. Any questions?
You saw one of the HAF a little short. Business as usual?
Well, you know, I mean, I gave all my updates, so now it's business as usual.
Okay.
It's exciting.
Thanks for this. Thank you, Amy.
Thank you.
City Engineer Report?
Good evening, everyone. As Amy said, we started a review of the Black Tie Components cyclines. So we, we'll have those done probably by the end of the week. Additionally, we had to meet with Teresa and Tom last week to discuss the Summit Carbon Substitution Pipeline, just the steps that they can take moving forward and what they need, what we need to find out, just to ensure Hartford's growth moving forward. Still, anything back on the Navs Landing and Turtle Creek lunch list items? I'll come back to six in a month. So the water tower, they started painting, got that set up. Sandblasted. Sandblasted, yep, sorry. They anticipate it'll take four or five weeks to be done, they have to work for their schedule. Moving on to the waterway facility, you know, science is moving along very well. We had our 30% minds complete a while ago, we need to move forward. Additionally, CMAR, I believe, the RFP will be due at the end of this week. So we'll be able to start those discussions with-
Two and then next week, isn't that the 30th yet?
And next week? Is it not the 30th yet?
No, not the 30th yet. Don't, yeah, you-
So, yeah, once, once that's done, we'll be able to handpick, you know, the individuals who I have interviews with and keep that process moving forward, so we can get them to CMR as soon as possible with that. On track, as far as, on track- track to get, uh, plans, expects to be EDA by, uh, March first, uh, twelve building. Um, on the bike and dirt hill, uh, still no update on that. I, I did check. I haven't, I haven't anything on the sale. It looks like it is still listed, uh, reducing reduced, so hoping that you have a swift, swift sale on that so we can get design before, just around crunch next year. Um, the storm shelter, finally we're able to meet with the state's two new hazard evaluation officers, um, that stepped in for Heather, uh, who's no wonder with them. Uh, they were very great to talk to, provided a lot of great resources, uh, for information we need for the, uh, teenoscope packet. Um, we're talking with Soviet CCOG and we're, we're targeting a, an October fifteenth, uh, calendar that submitted, uh, and then the, the state indicated it'd be approximately about a four month review process and then, um, and then we'll hear back from a few months additional funding. Um, you know, in that, within that teenoscope packets, uh, there's a few things we're going to need to just sit down and, and get from Teresa and confirm. Sounds like they, uh, since last, um, application was submitted, they have streamlined their process and a bit more, a little more stringent on some of the criteria. So we just want to make sure that crossing the keys down our eyes with this one, so we don't end up into any more issues. Um, on the Highway thirty-eight water main extension, we're making good progress on that and we'll have a separate craving and city to review, uh, here shortly. Um, we're done with, we'll throw off your call, just trying to let the, the trunks, just make sure there are no conflicts and those to mesh well. Um, Western Avenue interchange approach, um, as we kind of alluded to earlier, we are, we are wrapping that up and we will have that at the next meeting for your review with our recommendations. Um, right now, still looking at that, um, three lane road design with that shared center left generally. Um, so back to six in a month, um, progress is, is going well. Phase one is paved and open. Uh, phase two, they are grading roadway, uh, today, finishing up tomorrow, should have current weather on that, um, go for the next few days and then paved likely, uh, next year for, um, as far as phase three on the water main six, uh, they've begun that, um, started, uh, um, uh, west end early, uh, early this week and expect to have actually all of that made my water main in by the end of this week and then they'll come back and do the whole services. So they'll be reaching out to the residents, just letting them know that there'll be two or three hours disturbance, they think waters, uh, their water service while they do it. It shouldn't be too big of an issue considering a lot of those folks will be at work or at school, um, but we have, we have that in place and they will, they will come to residents. Um, Gene, so, uh, upon excavation of the, for the storm sewer in Genie Circle, uh, it was found that the water main is actually further north than our design locates and indicated, um, which means, uh, that the storm sewer would be in conflict with that water main. Um, so we, we did halt kind of that work in Genie Circle for the time being to get your input. Um, we kind of saw it, uh, saw three possible, you know, options to do. Um, the first of which would be to not install in storm sewer in Genie Circle, just repave the sections of the inner. Um, we had really included storm sewer on Genie, um, from, from Mont Avenue to get to that rock channel, um, that is on the north side of cul-de-sac there. Um, currently that rock channel just, um, collects runoff from Highway thirty-eight, it flows there and then it goes, it flows over land, over the sidewalk and folks' driveways, um, and then ultimately current weather down to where the dikes were. Um, you know, in the winters, I'll have that, you know, freeze that, that'll melt and then freeze and, and, you know, pretty thick ice on the sidewalks, which is a slipping hazard. The second option that we had, you know, analyzed was installing storms around the south side of the street, um, and then still installing that intake, uh, in that rock channel to collect that nuisance water. The rules for that would solely be for the area that is required to install that pipe, uh, meaning, uh, you know, once complete, there'd be a new section of, uh, pavement on the north side of Genie, a strip of that. The center of Genie would be an older section and then there was once again new, a new section of pavement on the south side of cul-de-sac. Um, the third option that we had saw was instead of having those different patches, all those cold joints and pavement which allow, allow water and it increased the speed at which the deteriorates, was removing the, all of the asphalt in Genie Circle and replacing it, uh, with new, just so it's one continuous surface. Um, the curb gutters are in good shape, so that would be able to remain. Um, and we have also put cost implications in, uh, the packet for you. Option one of not installing the storm sewer in Genie Circle would be, uh, a cost deduct of the project of approximately thirty thousand dollars. Uh, the second option where only the strip required for the sewer, uh, is completed would be, uh, their cost increase of approximately twenty-five thousand dollars and for only cul-de-sac of asphalt pavements for, uh, Genie Circle, uh, approximately forty thousand dollars. Want to know your, uh, you know, your thoughts and opinions on that, is there cost implications to the project?
So do we have any, anybody from Genie Circle here? Two oh six, two oh eight? So we don't have a right of way through there? We must have an easement, both of those properties?
Just an easement, yeah. The state, I think, acquired it or had the city acquired it back. Is that, um, well, that branch from, uh, the Brown Junk Base, the Fordland Building goes through there. Uh, the storm sewer is on Highway thirty-eight, that portion all the way through there too.
That's why it was originally added to this project, just because we know we have nuisance water flowing through there and like, he said, I mean, wintertime, you know, it freezes and thaws and builds up in the summer, so this, without, this is an opportunity to get rid of it, but then we ran into the water main issue.
My recommendation is to definitely put the storm sewer in and get rid of that problem up there, because if they want to do it now, they'll be fighting it later, forever. Um, as far as the road, I think once we dig into that storm sewer, see what kind of surface, what kind of, uh, material we're working with, because that area used to be a slew up in there, some pumps, there's some, the hosses up there that run near on, and some have got two to three sun pumps in them. So I think we're going to have pretty poor conditions in there. So I think when we dig this in, if we have poor, poor, uh, base underneath there, we should build it right and get it done.
So four cells, if we want all in, forty thousand might not be.
Might not touch it, yeah. You know, you, I mean, you can get by putting, I mean, getting the storm sewer in there and just getting these areas back in as good as we can, knowing that down the road sometime we'll probably have to replace this road.
So what's it going to cause to do, right?
I mean, you'd look at, I mean, depends on what you got for some base underneath there. If you had a decent sun base, you'd take, do some removals, get, um, put fabric down in there, uh, bring your base back in. I wouldn't know the exact numbers of these guys, but.
What do you mean at minimum worth here? Sixty-five thousand? Is it forty, twenty-five for the two, option two and three is what we need to do, or is it?
Well, the forty is going to be doing the, is actually with the road, everything. The twenty-five is just, uh, patching both sides back in and not dealing with the center. So it's another fifteen thousand, take the center out and cul-de-sac all of the pavement works. But if you have to do any over excavation and take out, if there's bad dirt underneath there, if it's black and it doesn't want to pack, you're, you're gonna have, you can, you can put the road back on, but it ain't gonna last.
Yeah, that's the unforeseen cost, right? And we're gonna have the unforeseen cost with option two, right, if we're taking.
I mean, either option two or three, you're still going to be hoping that you have good conditions there to work with. I mean, it's, until you start digging in through there and know what you really have, you're, you know.
When would be the next time you would come back to this?
I think we can still have time to have them put the storm sewer in and, um, at the next meeting, we'd be able to know, we'd know what kind of base they're in there, which I, I mean, if they have the water done, they should be in that storm sewer. If nothing else, we could maybe have them just go over and model a few spots or have Geotech come over and just do some more and just see what kinds of conditions we have to work with.
So that street has existed for roughly thirty years, right?
What's that?
That street has existed.
Uh, I got it put in ninety-six, ninety-seven.
Sure, so twenty-five years. Somewhere in there, okay. It's not truck traffic route, I mean, it's, it's, it's limited.
Yeah, it's limited, so you might have some, you know, the soil conditions might be good enough where you could have a street last another twenty-three years in there, you know. I mean, this last, you know, it's been in there for twenty-three years now, twelve, twenty-five years, most.
Right. So I mean, you're paying the, plan for the worst, hope for the best scenario. But the reality is we're, we're not disturbing the entire Genie Circle, we're just.
The crew, we're getting off, um, we're working on that and just hopefully we got decent base to put back in, you know, and you hate to patch up, put a patch on this side, a patch on this side, you know, but we can do it that way.
Slurry seal, I don't know what's the difference.
Yeah, you really wouldn't. We can, we can.
Fifteen thousand difference in either way, if there's bad material underneath, we're gonna have a problem.
Yeah. You, you don't know until you get into it. Like I said, that road, that, when that road got put in, it wasn't stripped standards like we have now. I mean, we were talking six inches of, uh, gravel and four inches of base, I mean, a four inches of asphalt, and it didn't get inspected. I mean, you don't know if you had, it was all done by developer. Um, you don't know if you have three inches of gravel. We found someplace on areas of town where there wasn't any gravel and asphalt.
But it's held up well, is what I'm saying. Given, given all of those.
All in all, it's held up fairly good, yeah.
So I was looking at that drainage, uh, way through there and it doesn't really solve the problem of any water flowing over, um, the sidewalk or the driveway of two oh six.
It would, because we're actually going to put an inlet on, uh, north of the drive, north of the sidewalk.
There's an, okay, okay.
So that was the whole intentions of this year, is to get rid of that water from, during a heavy event, you're still going to have it coming over the top, like normal rains and stuff like that, or melts during the wintertime, spring, that's not, you would pick that up or something.
Okay, that's intake will be installed in the rock ditch to collect nuisance water. Perfect, okay. Just want to clarify that for the property owners. Yes, ma'am, if you'd like to speak, please.
I'm Julie Pearson. I live at the two oh six Genie Circle and glad you guys are doing something about it, because we've lived there about four and a half years and it's been a nuisance. Um, and we get weeds every year. We pull the weeds just because if we don't, it won't let the water and the ice, you know, melt, the snow that we've got coming in our property. So, um, our, what is it, our sun pump pipe does go right to the edge of the, the drainage, so if you connect that, we're happy with that. But if you can do an underground drainage, we would both love it, wouldn't we? Because especially if you have dirt over it, we can take care of the property, because right now we've been taking care of it.
Right.
The rocks and everything, and then the water does come and pool, and then we have ice, and then, you know, we have some flooding at the end of our property too. And then my other question was, we do have, um, some markings in both of our properties right now, so you didn't know if you guys are cutting into our property to extend the sidewalk, because that's what kind of looks like right now.
Are they, uh, eggharks?
They're, they're orange, they're sticks with orange on them.
So those are some of the stakes that will, um, locate where that intake is put almost to be.
Okay.
So that's right in that rock channel there. There will be some driveway, sidewalk removal, which that's required to get a trench with a muck together to replace that storm sewer structure.
Okay.
That will hopefully replace the eggharks, will be showing with the orange, the lime and the lime, so.
So if you have to move some of the cement or whatever, you'll replace whatever you have to do, okay.
As a goal is, you know, minimal amount of disturbance as possible, but still, you have to contract, you know, to get up there and.
Sure, sure. Do you know about timeline? Are we looking in October probably now?
So we were looking on representation from council on this, on, on how to perform, or do it later.
We're okay with that, we're looking at the weeds.
Well, the weeds would stay.
Will they stay?
I mean, I guess technically they're still your responsibility, maybe that's the right way to phrase that, but weeds are still your responsibility. And unfortunately, they are, given our city, um, you know, nuisance, uh, proper maintenance organs, technically.
So then there would be, there would be a pipe then, and then having dirt on top?
No, all the way to the north end of that.
Just past the sidewalk there being inlet to the top there.
That's okay, at least have.
You would have your, the riprock pulling back up in there, you have to hold that bank, you know, so you'd fill your rocks, and then you'd have inlet, then you'd have sidewalk, overarm curve.
But we're not talking the whole length, that's what, two hundred feet?
No, just at the side.
Okay, okay, wait a minute.
Yeah, still roughly a hundred and forty feet from the north end to the sidewalk.
Okay.
And so that inlet is created, you know, it's going to be just on the north side of the sidewalk.
So we still have some pooling in the end?
There should.
Some water or no? Only have weeds and like in wintertime, okay.
If it were to start to, you know, ice up, I suppose you could throw a salt block in there.
Oh, yeah.
Next to my house, one that was then there, Craig, that never is now.
They usually stay pretty decent, you get, get your clothes on up, going, blowing, still warm enough, so.
So what, what you're proposing, I've seen done, and, um, the city doesn't own that drainage way, so it's still your responsibility, unfortunately. The only way to get away from that would be to, it doesn't look like there's really enough property there to have a, to warrant really that easement going through there. The, I mean, the easement will stay, but the, to, to turn that property over to the city would be not worth it. I mean, you still want to maintain your property.
Oh, yes.
Your house, and so unfortunately, it stays that route.
Okay.
But, but you'll have an inlet there, that'll alleviate a lot of the other issues.
Okay, and inlet, is that meaning it goes underneath, so the water would go underneath? I'm not a construction person, so that's, I'm just clarifying.
Yeah, so those, those ice damming issues that you have on your sidewalk and on your driveway would be eliminated.
Okay, awesome.
Or greatly reduced, yeah.
Take something. Okay, thank you, appreciate you. It's like always in never.
Ma'am, do you have anything to add?
I'm Varyla Trump. I live at two oh eight. Um, I don't know if I have what to add or to add to the nuisance part, that there's just a lot of bugs and standing water, but if that inlet is there, do you think the standing water?
Should be going, yes, yeah.
Oh, okay, so all that, standing water, so.
Do you support the option where the inlet goes?
Yeah.
And that's option two for us, or option three, and so really the only thing that the city council, if we're looking at those two option ways, is whether we replace all the asphalt on your street or just sections of it.
Yeah.
So thank you for your input.
Yeah, thank you.
And I do believe we'd have time, so if tonight we just say, let's go ahead with the, um, option two, and if we get into it and find out that there's issues with, uh, some surface and that stuff, then we can get some numbers and regress that. I would, I'd say let's just go with option two, my recommendations, so at least we get the pipe and get that storm sewer up there too.
I could totally support that. At the same time, it's not going to be a cheaper time to put asphalt on than there is today.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, once you get into it, then we'd know if we could, because if you can just tear that asphalt off and lay the mats back down, that'd be awesome.
Sure.
But if we start digging into it and we find soft, uh, soft conditions in there, then we might have to do some more excavating and get that taken care of, which would be another.
Your, your concern is our forty thousand might grow.
That's what I'm afraid of.
Okay, that's a fair point.
And I hope it doesn't. I mean, we've got some decent, many roads up there, been holding up pretty good. Mary Lane's been holding up good, Sixth Street, some parts of it failed, but, um, so maybe this is the same, it was all done with the same developer, same contractor, so hopefully it's in the same shape.
And, and it'd be, I assume, on the list to get slurry sealed next year anyway?
We'd certainly put it down there, yeah.
Any more discussion? Looking for a recommendation or motion over the recommendations. Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve option two as presented. One second. Further discussion? Call the vote. Brennaman?
Yes.
Madison?
Yes.
Wassler?
Yes.
O'Hara?
Yes.
The only other patent we have, actually, that you guys is, uh, pay application number three for that six project for six a month, uh, in the amount of three hundred ninety-nine thousand two hundred and five dollars and seventy-one cents. Uh, that is for progress through, I believe, through September fifteenth.
This is for work, are you?
This is for work that has been installed today, yes. This is for work that has been installed today, yes.
I would make a motion to curtail request number three to Zacharias Construction.
One second. Motion, one second. Los Lard?
Yes.
Madison?
Yes.
O'Hara?
Yes.
Brennaman?
Yep.
Van Ness?
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. All right. Public Works Superintendent, Portray Whitner.
Just a couple things to add. I guess, like Michael said, the water towers are getting sand blasted right now. They should be done with the outside this week, and then they'll move the inside, so they are moving on really good pace. They actually might be done with the outside tomorrow, which makes me go on. Dog park, we are moving ahead, we've got others, a couple pads to pour, hopefully we get some concrete this week and get that done. Then we'll be able to button up the rest of it that's not tied in yet. And then we'll work on the sidewalk, the driveway, and the parking lot, and start moving some dog toys in there. So we're moving ahead pretty good. I think we'll, for sure, like I said, end of September, first part of October, we should be pretty much wrapped up with it, so.
I stopped at Summit yesterday. They have a dog park at the gas station there. It's not quite twenty-nine, it's got a huge dog paw head as a place. I was surprised, actually.
Coffee cup?
At coffee cup area, yeah.
And the pool's been winterized, so we're just gonna wrap up a few things down there, and it'll be done for, wrapped up. That's all I really got, unless somebody has something for you.
I see Neil's working late, so.
Yeah, the contractor called me up there, they're doing some digging up there, and they got down by that, there's a six inch line that, back in the, that was ninety-five, I think, we put that in. Back then, we used some glued fittings, and there was a glued cap on the end of that that was leaking. They called me up and asked me to have, you know, if we'd come out and take a look at some. Neil went down and looked at it, called me back. I told him, just have the contractor fix it, and be done with it, so. So that should be...
That's gonna address the, so there was a house there?
Yeah.
That's where the water for that?
Yeah, I see the valve down there, it's teed down there, so it splits and heads back to the south, and then it comes down, nineties goes down, then it picks up that fire hydrant, and there's a saddle on there that picks up that, for that two inch line that comes up and down where that building used to be. And then at the end of that, it got put in there like that for future water main to go through that area. If it were ever happened, and that's, and that cap at the end of it was leaking, so that just, we're just gonna cut it and re-cap it, get it blocked, so it'll be good. We know what's there, so if we, trade courts would never go away, or if they would ever want water main down there, in separate services, in all places, they'd have that capability of it, so.
It's a deadheaded service then, right?
Yeah, just, yeah, it's just, there's about thirty feet in there that's deadheaded.
Sure.
There's probably only about five feet of deadhead that, besides, because after that, the service line takes off from the trade court, so that takes a lot of water, so.
All right, thank you, Craig. Van Ness, Officer, report.
My report's in the packet, and basic stuff. I don't have anything to add.
Moving on, City Administrator's report.
We already got the project updates. Just to let you know, there's a couple outstanding projects under structural engineers. The Ninth Street and the Root and Opal, the Root and Opal is complete now, there's some seating that's done. And then on the Ninth Street project, there are a couple of valves that need to be addressed that stick too far up in the ground. And so I'll be talking with Zacharias on Friday. We have a meeting with them here to see if you can complete those, and we can get those off our books and done and completed. Otherwise, I met again this week with FEMA representative to go over our requirements for the May twelfth deracial storm. There's a lot of paperwork required, so I'm gonna be meeting each week with them to kind of help us get all of that paperwork submitted, so we can get reimbursed for FEMA for some of those damages. The cyber analysis, DSU mentioned, I did get signed up with them to get that completed for us. They are booked out until March next year, so we are though on their roster, and so they plan to come in in March. And like I said, they, they come in and basically try to infiltrate our system, see where we have more strong points are, where our weaknesses are, and they kind of give us advice of what we need to do. And then they also, from my understanding, do a little training with the employees as far as what to look for, as far as suspicious emails, or things you, good practices of what you should or shouldn't do as far as, you know, the whole not letting anybody into your system, whatnot. So that's planned for March. I also talked with, I mentioned this a couple months ago, I talked with the Mini Sheriff's Department about, I'm putting together a kind of emergency plan for the city, and the Sheriff's Department's gonna come do what they call an L's training. And basically, they're gonna come and look at our facility, and once again, kind of assess what to do if you have an aggressive person come into the office. You know, what you should do, what you shouldn't do, where you should go, whatnot. And they said we can look at doing that this fall, so I touched base again with them today, so we're looking at probably October. We're trying to find a date in there to get that training completed with our employees as well. And just to mention, we did have our new employer, Public Works employee, start this week, and so we're so good. I think he's still here, so that's good. Craig hasn't scared him off yet, so. He's going well, and it'll be good to get him trained and enter. But Craig's happy to have another person that'll be helping with the different projects. Besides that, oh, I just want to mention that as far as, you know, our wastewater treatment facility and then regionalization, there was a meeting this afternoon, the other communities kind of all met, talk about going to the county next week, and basically asking to see if they can get any help with their ARPA funds to help with their conveyance line and whatnot. So they, that was kind of an organizational meeting to, it sounds like they are all still very interested in regionalization. Obviously, it depends on money, what they can get financed, and kind of cost is the big thing of it. So, but they are looking at going to the county next Tuesday to start that discussion with the county as far as if they can get any assistance there. And other avenue of assistance that was brought up during the meeting is possibly the state and Dan, and they have some grant programs out there too. So those talks are continuing, so we'll just see how those go. Continue the facilitator?
That was from your meeting today.
Yes, yep.
Also, will those ARPA funds have to be spent?
They have to be spent by twenty twenty-six, I believe, December of twenty twenty-six. They have to be, I think you have to commit to whatever project you're doing by twenty twenty-four, and spent by twenty twenty-six.
That's fairly aggressive, given the fact that there's not more use in place.
It's, it's, that's why it was kind of talked about, we need to move forward. If they want to anticipate using any ARPA dollars from the county or the state, they've got to be, got to start on it, because, yeah, like I said, to get everything in place.
Still their lowest cost option in almost every instance, I'm sure.
Oh, for the communities, I don't know.
Anybody have a better chance of going in the ditches or in the right ways, because you're not going on a state highway?
So, good point, yeah.
You should get the chance out.
Sure. Next Tuesday with the county, you said?
Next Tuesday, nine o'clock, if anybody wants to go. Nine o'clock, the county commission meeting at nine o'clock next Tuesday.
You had mentioned FEMA, that made me think of a tree dump. Craig, can you put that report on your, your city council report, just to keep it top of mind for me?
Yep.
Because there's a whole murmur, rumble from that into town. I don't know why, they called the guy Ward one.
I've been on him, get it cleaned up, and I told him he had so many days, because after that, we're gonna burn it.
But I got a can of diesel fuel, and I got a match.
Well, like Greg said, my meeting with FEMA, my first meeting, we had sixty days to get it completed, so it's either, he's got to get it all chipped, or then we have to burn it.
Just turns to smoke.
I'll get together with him again tomorrow, tell him that we need to get, keep moving with it, so.
Thanks.
Yeah, so it's to be addressed.
Have we given him the deadline?
Yeah, I talked to him a couple weeks ago, and told him at that time, I told him fifty days.
Okay, so. Good question.
Yeah.
You tell somebody they need to hurry up.
Yeah, no, I told him, I think it was a couple weeks ago, I talked to him.
Just say they're hurrying.
Yeah, I talked to him a couple weeks ago, I talked to him, I said, we have fifty days. I'll remind him that his days are running out fast, and we're gonna be burning it before, because we'll have to have a burn too before, there's sixty days left, so.
Maybe incorporate that with the line walk.
Hey, wildfire down there.
Yeah, we've got, let's see, moving on, is that all for your report, TruSo?
Yep.
All right, thank you. Next slide, we're going to see the discussion of the purchase of the Gage House. So staff recommendation and the report is in our packet. Essentially, that's been funded by the city council for as long as I've been on the city council, previous to that. I think we made a substantial increase in the amount provided for their funding.
Yeah, about six, seven years ago.
Yeah, they didn't ask for it, we just gave it to them.
I may have had somebody chirping in my ear about that too.
But it's been funded from the city for, I don't know, how many years, way before me, so.
If you don't ask for it, you don't get it, but that case was like, ah, you guys kind of need it, here you go. So is there any discussion regarding the recommendation?
So since the last meeting, then, there in your packet, we did have the state electrical inspector, plumbing inspector, and then ISG did a structural review of the building. And obviously, we know there work needs to happen in the basement and the upstairs, definitely cannot be usable at this time. But, you know, the main floor can be maintained and whatnot, for now. Like I said, all the reports obviously have something that needs to be addressed, and if we would ever want to make any improvements, or basically pull a building permit to do any changes, we would have to address some of this stuff in here. The structural engineer, I mean, to me, that's kind of the big thing, we want to make sure the buildings aren't gonna fall down tomorrow. All in all, like I said, there's things that we should do it, some borders should be placed, some tuck pointing in the base or whatnot. But I think all in all, it's structurally sound, it's not really blowing, I mean, so I mean, for definitely a building of its age, it's, those are common things, and it's, yeah, it's actually held up pretty well, so. I think it's not gonna fall down tomorrow, right? Okay, so that's, yeah.
Just if you do a visual inspection of it, I don't see any walls bulging or we know.
Yeah, when we went down into it, I couldn't see anything like that either. Nothing's leaning, nothing's bulging, yeah, whatnot.
Apparently, it's a very unique sort of exterior finish.
Yes, we know that, it's a very unique building.
An opportunity to get a local expert, a local, regional expert in there.
I would think so.
You know, the story, yeah, the char, the char. Well, clearly, there's a fire there.
I was thinking, I was, I was, too, when I read.
There is a spot, so there is down the basement, that's in the basement area, the old joints is there. But there was a lot, there was like four different woodworks or chimneys down there, so I wonder if one of them didn't have an issue, came on, got back to it.
I think my question is, there was a couple of priority level one recommendations.
Is that with the electrical or?
It was actually, it was the joints.
Did they were placing for?
Oh, yeah, some of them.
Seven joints? Yeah. And our structural engineer gave a spitball number on that, like round five, right? So, you know, that was one of my things too, when I reviewed that report, and I was like, okay, it's priority one, what's the cost of this, right? He said, you know, it's kind of minimal work when we're talking structural, so he said, you know, a couple grand should be here, and so it's not, one thousand, twenty-five thousand dollars.
I mean, I think if we would purchase the building, I would need to get the understanding of that, it's to be careful.
And we have a, I don't remember seeing here, the roof on that's fairly new.
They just replaced it.
Yeah, and was there some storm damage that was repaired?
Yes.
I saw that one, that's all fixed up. So when we see the photos on the drainage in the second floor, that's, that's from the old roof, and that is a drum now.
It's just mold down.
vinegar water one.
As long as it doesn't fall down.
Asking prices, thirty thousand.
If you don't have a restored downtown ARPA fund, we can pull out of it, do we?
Not much to want to talk to the H A D F, and maybe they'd be willing to help with the purchase.
I don't want to. Somebody else on the phone.
We've had a little bit of discussion, and I hope to have some more of it.
Well, we're looking for, does that mean we should wait until you have more discussions?
No, I think you can move forward with your plan today, and then we'll continue discussion, and if there's some way we can help out, we'd be happy to.
Are you gonna need a motion to buy or not, and then a motion to allocate funds, or which ones are?
I would make a motion to proceed with the purchase agreement, and then I think we'll have Tom actually draft up a purchase agreement that senior center, and you guys will review again to get all those details of who's paying for what, and then that will be a final, so. I think right now, if you're interested, with the motion to have him draft a purchase agreement.
Yeah, and the only thing, and I don't want to get too far into the weeds here, but what about common maintenance and care, cleaning, mopping, toilets? Is that gonna be city staff responsibility, or essentially the tenant who uses it?
I don't think the tenant wants to do it. I mean, that's something we can talk to them some more about it, but it may be... They are hired, have somebody hired, don't you?
I mean, general maintenance, we'd probably...
Like general maintenance, like fixing things? I think public works, like the cleaning, I mean, it may be something where we'd have to, like, you know, we have a cleaning service come and do a city hall, maybe.
That's what I mean. Those are some of the things that we haven't talked about.
Right.
You know, if they're having a venture, they're gonna expect city staff to help set up, or, you know, to what extent is the ownership of the building? We're doing everything.
Maybe we can have some more discussions on that, and like I said, get it hammered out in the purchase agreement.
Yeah, put it in agreement, because basically, they'd be renting from you.
Yeah, so it'd be a purchase agreement, there'd be a lease.
Yeah, 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 it's a agreement and a lease back to them.
Yeah, sure. Just some details, I think. We don't want any surprises.
And if we do the repairs for basement, is that a building permit to do those, and that does that mean we need to do some of the other repairs if we start?
I can talk to Paul Clark about that, if we would, if we did the priority one, that that would trigger, you know, like, nothing, plumbing or electrical will be triggered because you're not touching those areas.
Plumbing, what we, like, electrical, as over there with Jason, and he's, we need to put some GFIs in the kitchen area, there's no GFIs in there. So he said, you could, you know, like, basically, like for likes, we could just switch those on ourselves. The plumbing, there was some...
It's not entirely true, but.
Kind of is.
I do know a guy, but yeah.
There's some plumbing stuff down there that, when I met with Ron, he's like, you know, you guys can just switch these off, get a hanger on here, get this on, switch this pipe PVC cord PVC, because it's got EBS in there, or whatever, you know. So I mean, it's pretty minor stuff, the plumbing and the electrical, you need to address. Things like said, structure, that's something, like, how far we have to go if we touch, right?
Yeah, I just think if, you know, we're gonna put X and Y back in, do it immediately, how does that affect the price of the pay, or?
The cost, yeah.
For comparison, say, is that on three lots?
Probably two. Oh, yeah, they got the empty.
I think they got three lots.
Yeah, that's roughly, roughly what we paid for the lots that the brewery sits on. That's three lots there, isn't it? That's three lots there, isn't it?
Yeah, didn't we pay like thirty-seven, five or something like that for the brewery?
That was prepared, so.
So, hey, costs of the lot.
We weren't leasing the bare lots.
For ourselves.
Bird in the hand, same, same, same. Just as a, there's not a lot of property that the city's purchased down the town, so. So as discussed, at this point, we'd just be looking for approval. Taking a draft of the purchase agreement for the Gage House. Make that a motion.
One second.
Any further discussion? Call the vote, O'Hara?
Yes.
Brennaman?
Yep.
Madison?
Yes.
Boss Lager?
Yes.
Yeah, yes. All right, next item of business, new business. Discuss offer to purchase twenty-six B, block six, of Western Metals Edition. Teresa sends this packet out on Friday nights, and I get calls on Saturday mornings about stuff like this, so.
So Garrett Schroeder, who is a contractor in town, owns a lot that's basically on the northwest corner of Root Trail and Root Lane, basically right to the west of the Coffee Cup and you can tell on the map there. He actually owns the lot right to the west of that as well, he's currently building a house on that lot to the west. His plan was to build a house on this lot, but after talking with his realtor, they don't think that's the ideal location with the Coffee Cup there and the industrial lot, so. He was wondering if the city is interested in purchasing the lot, so I said I'd bring it to the city council. You know, we have, and where he got wind of it is, you know, he originally asked the developer if they would do some lot switch with him, you know, give a different lot for that lot, and they wouldn't do that. And the developer told him, maybe the city would be interested in doing like a pocket park there or whatnot, since we don't have any parkland area in, in Western Metals Edition at all. The developer didn't give us any land, but the developer did pay us some funds, so, I mean, we can purchase some land. Craig and I both looked at this, we don't know if this is the lot we want a park to be on, and.
Dog park, pocket?
I was going to say, maybe the Coffee Cup.
Pocket dog park, maybe that, that would pour the Coffee Cup, that might be really good there. For an actual park, though. Like I said, just the, distracted from the Coffee Cup and industrial lots, Craig looked at, we'd probably can only get a couple items.
I mean, it's way in the corner away from.
Yeah, it's not in the middle of where all the houses are going up.
The apartments to the south, to the north, they've already got their own park system in there, so, I mean, it's not a real ideal spot for a park.
So the contractor building a single-family home on twenty-six A?
Yes. He, so that used to be all just one lot originally, and he was going to do a twin home, but the elevation were so off, it sloped so much, he decided to split it and do, you know, the one home in the, on the west, which is currently doing it. And he's going to do one on this east lot, but that's just to say he doesn't want to do it, but just wondering if we're interested, I said I would get feedback from the council, but. Except, we can think of something else to do with it, I mean, it's not outrageously priced, but I just don't know what we would do with it.
The only question, the only comment I had, looking at this, was is there any necessity for the city to acquire it for drainage concerns? Because the storm sewer currently serving that area is at the end of Diamond Trail and Row Lane, that intersection, correct, roughly?
In order to bring the drainage in there properly to help all that area, because right now, it's all just surface drainage, and it's on the, inlets, on that intersection, I said that diamond, Root Trail there, or Root Lane. You'd have to bring, you'd have to cut, you know, tear up the road and bring a storm sewer up the road and put it lets out there, which you'd just be catching the water that doesn't, that keep the water on the corner.
Sure.
You wouldn't want to bring it into that lot, because then you potentially push it into those apartments.
Right.
Because they are quite that elevation that goes that way.
Sure.
So in order for it to really work, it would, it really would work to help all with the drainage situation.
Thank you.
I was trying to say it's a bad idea.
Doesn't help anything. The dog park radio is probably the best idea.
That's probably the best one. I'm going to get the first one up first.
Maybe Coffee Cup, maybe Coffee Cup's deal. All right, but they'd want to eat your stairs, they'd want to cross.
That's fine.
No action on this at this time, executive session yet for.
I would like for legal.
Make a motion to go to executive for legal?
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. opposed?
Okay.
Motion here? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?